Okay, good evening and welcome. This is August 24th, 2020. This is the regularly scheduled school committee meeting. It is six o'clock. We'll call immediately, excuse me, call the meeting to order. We have the entire school committee present this evening. And we will, what I'd like to do is start off with our minutes. We're going to give folks time to set up for some remote questions. So if you could go to item number two, then we'll do our subcommittee correspondence and then we will allow for visitors to speak this evening. Okay, so with that, we have some minutes for approval tonight.
We'll start with the approve the June 15th, 2020 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion's been made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Discussion. Hearing not all's in favor, please say aye.
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 And I'm going to abstain. Was this June 15th?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Okay, that's four ayes and one abstention. Okay, next.
Move to approve the June 22nd, 2020 executive session meeting minutes.
Thank you, Bill. Motion's made.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Further discussion. Hearing not all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain.
And that carries four to four zero and one abstention.
And I'm abstaining because I wasn't here, just so people know. I wasn't on the board at that point.
Yep. Next one, 2.3.
Move to approve the June 22nd, 2020 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion's been made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Antonella. Discussion. Hearing not all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain.
Four, four, in favor and one abstention. Okay. 2.4.
Move to approve the June 29th, 2020 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Antonella. Discussion. Hearing not all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain.
Motion carries four to zero, one abstention. 2.5. Come on, Bill, we're gonna roll.
Move to approve the July 1st, 2020 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion been made by Bill. Second.
And I'll second.
Second by Beth. Discussion. Hearing not all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. That carries five to zero.
Okay, move to approve the August 3rd, 2020 executive session meeting minutes.
Motion has been made by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by Beth. Discussion. Hearing not all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. That motion carries five to zero. Final one.
Move to approve the August 3rd, 2020 regular session meeting minutes.
Motion has been made by Bill.
Second.
A second.
By Antonella. Further discussion. Hearing not all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. That carries five to zero. Mrs. Sletty, thank you for all your work on those various minutes. We will move on to committee and subcommittee communications. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss tonight? No? Okay. At this point, we will give an opportunity for visitors to address the committee. If you're linked in through the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand to be acknowledged.
Hey Greg.
Yeah.
Just I'm gonna jump in here. We are unable at this point to get a live stream over Facebook.
Okay.
Hanging up. So just, obviously the people who are looking for this meeting on Facebook right now won't know that, but I just wanted to let everybody know beforehand. We'll keep trying.
They, they can't participate through Facebook though, raising their hands. So they would have to be on this link.
True. Okay. Take comments now.
Okay. I don't see any hands raised, so we're gonna move forward.
Okay.
Mr. Mackey, if you could just let me know if we are able to get that Zoom meeting up, you can, you can even text me on that if you want.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we're gonna move along then. We're gonna go for an update on the reopening 4.1.1. Mr. Smith.
Okay, so in your packets, I had put in just an update, a one-page update, which I certainly can add to. Now, we've been working with our instructional planning groups in each building, as well as, I think I've mentioned in other meetings that we've had, a district-wide instructional planning group. And based on some of the discussions that we've had, not only during school committee meetings, but also discussions that we've had during our ELEA and ELPS planning meetings and negotiations. One of the areas that we were looking to do was, or looking to put in place, was one, certainly follow the regular school day, because this is different than what we were putting in place in the spring, when all of a sudden schools shut down and we were thrust into some type of remote learning. So we know, and have already started to communicate out, that Meadowbrook's gonna run their day from 9:00 a.m. to 3:15 p.m. Maple Shade's going to run their academic day, 8:10 a.m. to 2:25 p.m. Mountain View is gonna run their day from 8:15 to 2:30 p.m. Berchleyland Park, which is our middle school, is gonna run their day from 7:35 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then the high school is going to run their day from 7:25 to 1:45 p.m. Our focus, as we've worked with these, these groups, is not only building a robust remote learning program, but also starting to think about how, in this environment, we recultivate and reconnect with our students and build the relationships that we, we know that we're able to do when we're fully in person in more normal operations, if you will. And so not only have we been discussing it and looking at it, but it's something certainly that's been discussed with all of you. And we started to work with the ELEA and the instructional planning groups on developing meet and greets, if you will, for lack of a better term, and starting to schedule early on times when our, our teachers can meet with smaller groups, smaller than even, say, we were originally looking at, say, in a hybrid model. So that we can keep, obviously, everyone safe, but we can get that in-person connection. And all of our buildings are working on that. Our middle school and high school, who traditionally run orientations before school starts, they have built and organized an orientation, both for our sixth graders. First, that'll start with a virtual meeting with parents and sixth graders. And then they will be bringing in, on the first day of school, in more in-person meetings, our sixth grade. And then actually, they'll have those same type of in-person meetings for the seventh grade on the seventh, excuse me, second day of school. And then the eighth grade on the third day of school. High school also has begun to build their orientation. And they will have not only information out in some virtual meetings, but they also will have some in-person parts, their orientation, that's gonna be run by their counselors. And so they will be scheduling smaller groups of students in the ninth grade that come meet first outside and then set up where they can make and offer structured, safe tours of the building. So that would start our reconnecting with students, if you will. And then at the elementary level, they're building, in many cases, both times to meet with parents and their students, and then times for the students themselves. And they're putting these schedules together. Some of that would happen just before school. And then the in-person meetings with the students would happen on those first three days of school, where they can connect, they can start to explain how the remote model's going to be set up. And they can start to establish not only a connection with the students and families, but also sort of expectations and provide some materials during these days. And then one of the discussions in our ELEA planning was around, you know, should this work well? Maybe we replicate it in a month or two and look at how that might look, just to keep that personal connection. The key, obviously, is to have all your safety protocols in place and have small enough groups to make this work. I don't know, Mrs. Brown, if you wanted to add anything, or Dr. Welsh. Part of that, obviously, is bringing in some of our significant and more complex programs in terms of special education programs.
Heather, I'll just go real quick. You know, we've been communicating with families throughout this process. And it's just something that we'll continue to do as we move forward for all students with IEPs. Special Ed liaisons will be reaching out to families and should be maintaining that throughout the whole period of remote learning.
And Dr. Welsh is being humble. She has actually done many of those phone calls as we've been looking to see what's going to work best for our students and their families. Because we will be providing some in-person learning in our buildings, but we'll also be providing some remote learning. And so Dr. Welsh actually has been the point person in making a lot of those phone calls and connecting with our families. So we're lucky to have Dr. Welsh in the position that she's in and for the many great relationships that she's been able to foster over the time she's been here.
Thank you.
I give an update. We've been offering a lot of voluntary PD for folks around a lot of the new remote learning tools and just new methodology. We had one last week, which was very well attended. We're going to have another one this Wednesday. All summer, teachers have had access to self-paced courses around all of these tools, as well as methodology. And we are, have a great schedule for the 10 days before school for PD as well. So there's a lot happening and a lot of takers, so our teachers are gonna be very well prepared.
And, Mr. Brown, you've also begun to set up, I don't know if we would call it professional development, but information settings for parents as well.
That is in the works. As soon as I can get this week through, the families, the family workshops will start.
So obviously, we want to continue the connection, both with our students and our full ELPS families. So we hope that that will be something that's useful and that parents will engage in, just walking them through how we use things like the Google Suite, how we log on in a single sign-on with Clever, and make sure that they're understanding everything that we're utilizing to help support students' learning.
So I have a couple of questions. The first one is, are the sessions where we're going through, like, orientations being recorded so that families have access to that in the event they're unable to attend the live sessions?
We certainly can look at the virtual piece, recording that. Certainly, I don't know if the schools have put that into place, but that's something we can talk about. They haven't, they haven't taken place yet.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think the way we outlined it, Gordon, is there was, so they're mostly gonna be outside, so no, Sarah, they won't be recorded. But I do believe that.
Well, the virtual, the virtual question and answer might be able to be recorded.
Oh, is that what you mean? Okay.
Yeah, that was my first question. My next question is then, so I'm really confused that, so then who's teaching kids on the 16th, 17th, and 18th? So instruction and remote learning really isn't starting on the 16th, 17th, and 18th?
So on the 16th, if you look at each different grade level, it's generally gonna be done by grade level. So the grade level coming in would be working with their students and obviously building routines similar to what we would do in person anyway. And then the other grade levels would be working remotely on those days. And then the next day, they would have their in-person meetings. So we're gonna have a combination on those three days throughout the grades. And one of the things that we had discussed was the idea of as they're setting certain expectations and obviously providing information on how to use some of these tools, the homework when they go from that live session would be accessing it, looking at some of the things that maybe teachers have already posted to kind of bring them into the school year.
So I guess I'm just confused. Like, why aren't we using those 10 days to promote this work? Why are we starting them on the actual, like, first day of school?
To have the kids come in, you mean, Sarah? When the kids are coming into the school?
Yeah.
Because that's when school starts. Because the, we can't expect families to have their kids come in before school starts. Is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, I mean, if this is like a meet and greet and it's not necessarily instruction-driven, it's a chance to meet and greet your educator.
Isn't it similar to the first day of school, things you would go over, here's the expectations, here's what we're expecting? And because we're expecting the teachers to meet with small groups, it's gonna take a little bit of time to go through in a day to get all those groups in. It's just a logistical thing, more than anything.
Right, but isn't that what we are saying, that they're gonna have one day to do it? Because.
Yes.
Like, one day by grade level, I think.
Right, one day.
Right.
Grade level gets a day.
So that's what, so I'm, I think I'm confused by what you said then.
The day the kids come in for their meet and greet, that will be their school for the day, yes.
With.
Yeah.
Because the teacher's meeting with the other groups. I don't know how we can, how can you meet with other groups and, and teach at the same time? I'm trying to grasp your question.
My question was, why are we reserving that for the 16th, 17th, and 18th? Why aren't we using the 10 days of collaboration time to foster this meet and greet situation, rather than waiting until when school's opening? Shouldn't that be when we start our program?
Some of the parent meetings and the virtual meetings and the orientation, all of that's gonna happen prior to the school starting. So they are gonna utilize the 10 days. And then the individual meetings with students start, we started to plan when school actually started and students needed to report.
But I guess on that same argument, like, wouldn't kindergarten not be starting? And kindergarten's gonna have their meet and greet on the 16th, 17th, and 18th. So I just, I'm not, I'm not.
Actually, kindergarten is gonna have to schedule screenings because they have not, we're not able to do screenings in the spring. So kindergarten's on a different schedule. They would start with their screenings, and that will be happening. And kindergarten actually is generally one or two days behind the start of the rest of our grades. In this case, it might be three days behind the start of the rest of our grades.
Yeah.
We're gonna have the in-person meetings, but we'll also have screenings with, you know, on those first few days that were not able to take place in the spring.
I just think that's confusing for families personally. I think when you think about school starting and we're saying we're opening in a certain format, which is the remote format, and then we're recalling and saying, but we're gonna do the meet and greet during those days when we're saying we're gonna be remote. I just think that that's confusing. And we do have 10 days where we can start to have these types of sessions. And maybe they could have been longer in nature, rather than, I mean, if you're scheduling every kid to come in on one day, how long of a meet and greet is that gonna be?
I think the elementary schools were looking at 30 minutes or 45 minutes. And then Berchleyland, I'm not sure exactly that, I don't think we discussed the timeframe. I don't know if Mrs. Brown or Dr. Welsh knows.
I'm sorry, I don't know. And I know we discussed it today at leadership, but I don't know. I don't want to give you the wrong.
Yeah, I mean, I would hazard a guess that's gonna be similar, 30 to 45 minutes, similar to, you know, a learning block.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? No? Just worth noting that Superintendent Smith and I have done a few recordings, informational recordings. There are on the LCAT YouTube webpage, are also available on the Facebook book link as well. So more information on reopening is there as well. Okay. Is that all we have on reopening, Gordon?
That's the, the update right now, yes.
Excellent. Okay, thank you so much. All right, let's move forward. We have our next topic of discussion. We're gonna talk about the potential for fall sports. And if we could bring in Mr. McGee and Mr. Page.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Mr. Page.
Frank.
How we doing, guys?
We're hanging in there.
Are you hanging in there? That's the question.
Living the dream, living the dream. So, okay, so are you ready for us to get started?
Yeah.
All right, is, is Mr. McGee with us?
Mr. McGee is with us.
Hey, Kevin.
All right, so.
You share the screen, so Mr. Mackey may have to allow you to share the screen.
Okay. I, I don't, yeah, I don't see that option yet. But yeah, Mr. Ma, Mr. Mackey, give me screen sharing options, that'd be awesome. Okay, I have it. All right. Okay, so tonight, we're gonna talk to you guys a little bit about how we are having discussions around some different models that we can potentially put together to safely give our kids an opportunity to participate in athletic programs at the high school. First, before I even get into it, I do want to say a few thank yous. One is to the, all the families that have been contacting myself, you school committee members, Mr. McGee, Mr. Smith. In regards to the athletic programs, I think it just shows that, you know, it is a community that's really invested in, in the schools and the community, and they want what's best for their kids. And they, and want to give them opportunities where we can safely give them those opportunities. So thank you to the families. I also want to give a thank you to Mr. McGee, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Smith, and the planning that Dave collaborated with me on over the last week or so. Because I think we've had some great discussions about how we can potentially safely put some programming in place for our students at the high school. So, so with that, as with anything right now, in terms of planning for the opening of school, there's a lot of complexities that go into the, the athletics discussion. So as we go through each slide, I'll pause at the end of each one to see if you guys have any clarifying questions. There's a lot of information in there, and I will say for any of the families who are watching at home, after I present and we go through the, through all the questions, I will share this presentation out with the families just so they have an opportunity to view it on their own. So I will email that out later tonight. So just to give you a quick overview of some of the things that have been going on in, over the, the last month. So they're, the MIA COVID Task Force, they've been meeting since June. And to talk about different ways they might be able to implement athletics for the upcoming fall season. About two weeks ago, they presented their, the recommendations to the MIA Board of Directors. And last week, the MIA Board of Directors voted to approve the recommendations of the task force. Just a couple of highlights from those recommendations. First, the task force recommended postponing the football and cheer season to a specially-designed floating season, which will begin in late February. Those teams, so your football and your cheer teams, could still participate in what we call Level One practices by meeting certain safety guidelines this fall. So in short, we are not talking about playing football or having a cheer program this fall in their entirety. We are talking about moving those games and those participations into a later floating season, is what the MIA is calling it, in February, March, and April. So some of the sports we're gonna be talking about tonight, and this is from the, the MIA COVID Task Force, are sports like soccer, field hockey, cross-country, girls volleyball, golf. They, they put forth some recommendations in terms of how to potentially modify those sports safely and, and allow them to participate this fall in what we call Level Three. So just for reference, so you understand the, the different levels that I'm talking about here. Level one, and this is where they're allowing football and cheer to still participate in some capacity, that would be individual training and skill work. So those kids are socially distancing. They're working individually on things that might be connected to their sport. So if you're looking at something like football, you're talking about maybe a lineman who is going through his steps and doing some endurance training to prepare for a potential season in February or, or March. Level two, it's when you're looking at competitive practice in cohorts of 10 or less. So those students in groups of 10 can compete against each other in small groups. But again, it's just in that practice atmosphere. Level three is what we're talking about tonight. And again, this is just a, a discussion. We're not looking for any decisions to be made, but just so you're gonna get the understanding of it. That Level Three would allow students to participate in athletic events against teams from other schools. Obviously, with safety modifications in place to limit the risk in those athletic events. All right, so again, we're, we're talking about Levels One, Two, and Three. On the next slide, I'll talk about more how those levels are implemented in the different sports, and also why football and cheer are excluded from those direct contact competitions this fall. So before I go any farther, anybody just want to chime in, ask questions? Okay, all right. All right, so just, so just a quick snapshot of the athletic programs that we offer every fall at the high school. These sports have been broken up by the state into three different tiers. The first tier is boys and girls cross-country and our golf programs. Those are considered low-risk sports. Those are sports that naturally lend themselves to social distancing and the safety requirements that are, are being put in place in a lot of different places in society right now. You know, there's sports that, in a lot of ways, you can, if you modify them appropriately, you can have those athletes participate almost on an individual level where they really would almost be isolated in a sense. So they're, they're sports that you can participate at a low risk. The next three sports that they outlined for us are, in that second tier, it's what we call moderate risk. That's field hockey, soccer, and volleyball. And the state is saying, if certain modifications are made, those sports could potentially run this fall. Right now, we're still waiting for more information about how some of those modifications might be made through the MIA. But these are sports that could potentially run. And the last two, they are, they're considering them higher-risk sports. That's cheerleading and football. Because that you, there's a lot of direct face-to-face intimate contact between those sports. They're considered higher risk, and they're the ones that are being moved to that potential floating season in February, March, and April, where, you know, the hope would be that, depending on where levels and transmission rates are across the state at that point, you might be able to have those in-person events for those sports. Questions so far?
If they do Level One in the fall, will they be able to do Level Three in the spring?
So I, I, I think it's on my next slide, but I will, I will hit on that now, anyone. So any of these sports that, let's say, get deemed by the different state subcommittees for each individual sport, or the PVIC, or even the school themselves decide that, you know, we cannot appropriately modify that sport to make it safe this fall for field hockey, soccer, and volleyball, those three sports could be bumped to that floating season in the spring with football and cheer as well.
Okay.
But cross-country and golf, in order to compete, those, because they are in that lower risk, they did not move those sports to that floating season.
Okay.
Next slide? All right. Okay, so fall sports seasons. So the, the traditional fall sports season that's scheduled to run this year, they did push back the starting date for it. So the, the fall sports season right now is scheduled to run from September 18th to November 20th. Right now, based on the MIA recommendations from the, the COVID Task Force Committee and the vote by the Board of Directors, they're saying with modifications, all of our sport, all of our ELHS fall teams, so it's all the sports on the previous slide, could practice during the season at a Level One or a Level Two. And I just want to emphasize there, it says Level One or Two. Football and cheer, again, can only run at Level One. The next piece with that, with modifications, all of our teams, again, not including football or cheer, may compete with other schools during this season at Level Three if the appropriate modifications are put into place. Now, the floating season is one I highlighted a little bit earlier. Cheer and football, again, are automatically moved to that floating season, but they could practice this fall either way. So football could still practice at Level One, September through November, and then they would actually play in their games, practice more in March, April, May. The, the fall sports that are not approved by the school committee to compete against each other during the traditional fall season can move to that floating season. So I will tell you right now, we're part of the PVIC, Pioneer Valley Interschool Athletic Conference. All the schools throughout that conference are having these same discussions right now with their administrators, with their central office staff, with the school committee. From what we understand, out of the 42 schools, 40 of them are entertaining this possibility and trying to figure out whether or not they can meet these guidelines and safely participate. Next slide? Okay. All right, so just so you kind of understand some of these guidelines, obviously every sport has their own complexities, has their own rules, their own nuances. I just want to give you a, a quick overview of what, um, the, uh, the sports might look like as we, as we go through this discussion and as we start moving closer to school and we get some of these recommendations from some of these different committees. Uh, so every sport has their own, um, sports committee at the state level, and right now they're looking at the guidelines, um, being set forth and trying to figure out how they can potentially modify that sport to make it safe and may meet those level three, guidelines, so you could actually have competitions between schools. So, different things you can see, um, you might see in some of these different sports, a sport like cross-country or golf, you see staggered start times. Uh, one of the things we talked about with golf right now, when the kids tee off, they tee off together with the members from the other school. Uh, so we talked about, um, potentially just having your school tee off by themselves and go out onto the course, and then at the end you can, you can compare scores. So, it's almost like the school's competing in a bubble, uh, separate from the other school on the same day, and then you add up the scores, uh, remotely after. Uh, so, um, so it's, it's one of those ways of staggering starts, eliminating, uh, eliminate contact. If you look at a sport like soccer, uh, some of the recommendations they're making, if you can find ways to, to modify the rules to avoid things like slide tackling, um, in football, you're talking about blocking, um, different things you can do to eliminate that, uh, intentional face-to-face contact. Minimizing intermittent contact, so, uh, parts in the game where you might have a stop, like in soccer, when you have corner kicks, when you have throw-ins, are there ways you can modify the rules within those sports to eliminate those times where those kids are breathing heavy, in close proximity, uh, playing the ball? Uh, and I will say, uh, across the board, in order to compete at the level three, um, kids will be required to wear masks during the athletic events, uh, for those moderate-risk sports. So, field hockey, volleyball, soccer, they would be required to wear the mask. Questions so far? Okay. All right, so, uh, for the, uh, so with that, uh, there's two different models that we're looking at. Uh, and again, this is, this has been some great collaboration that we've had over the course of the last week, uh, with both superintendent, with, uh, Chair Thompson. Uh, just to talk about, you know, what are the different options that we can, um, put together to in some way get our kids at Easton Metal High School the opportunity to participate athletically, be active, uh, get involved in the school in some capacity. Uh, so with that, you're going to see two models discussed and presented tonight. Uh, the first model is the interscholastic model, and that's, that's the discussion around, uh, kids competing against other schools. Uh, so the MIA is encouraged that, uh, schools over participating in the traditional fall season to create a fall schedule within leagues, uh, and geographic regions to limit travel and the number of opponents. It's one of the things we're talking about in order to put things safely in place, is you have a limited number of opponents and you're competing against the same schools. Uh, so it's almost like creating a bubble within the towns around you, where maybe we only compete against, you know, these, uh, communities that have low transmission rates around us, uh, that are, uh, in close proximity, places like Long Meadow, um, Willberham, uh, and we only compete against a set number of limited communities. You would only play a home game and away game against each team within that bubble. There is a possibility of no spectators being allowed at those games just to, uh, to have that safe environment. Um, schools are looking at live streaming options to allow parents and family members to, to watch those games. But we, we will need to, um, you know, make decisions. I, I think you guys are going to be discussing this again at September, at the September third meeting. We're, we're hoping to have those decisions in place at some point, uh, by early to mid, mid, uh, September. Uh, and just as a point of reference, uh, based on initial communications with other athletic directors, again, most schools are pursuing in some way and, and looking at different ways of potentially having those out-of-town competitions. Uh, we don't know where they're all going to fall. I think a lot of, uh, the next couple of weeks, you'll have a lot of communications between us and the schools around us to find out what their planning is and, and ways they might be trying to put these parameters, uh, safely into place. Can I jump to the next one? So, this is, this is option one, is that interscholastic model. So, the, the next one, uh, that we're talking about is if we can't meet these guidelines or, or as the soccer committee for PBIC and the MIA come forward and they say, listen, this isn't going to work, we should move all of these games to that, um, that February, March, April floating season, uh, we still want to give our kids an opportunity to participate in some way. So, if we're not playing against schools interscholastically, can we potentially put a model into place at the high school where these kids could at least compete against each other in some way? So, they can get exercise, uh, they can be competitive, they can have that interaction in a safe way. Uh, so with this, this is similar to what we would see, um, for a rec program model where, uh, elite ELSH student athletes would have the opportunity to participate against each other in sports like soccer, field hockey, volleyball, and, uh, do so in a safe way at that level three, uh, but it's in a sense creating an Easton Metal bubble where we're not necessarily interacting with those other communities around us. So, with this model, you're talking about all fall athletic teams, uh, will meet five days a week, so they're getting that, that daily exercise. Uh, the first two weeks, we're talking about practicing drills, conditioning, and in the remaining six weeks of the, uh, of the season, we'll, we'll have practices and scrimmages, uh, scrimmages that will basically replicate games, so the kids get that competitive edge. Um, so there, there's two models that we're talking about here. The first model is one where, again, that's one being discussed by a lot of other communities as well. We're trying to figure out if there's a way we can, um, compete interscholastically with other communities. Uh, but then we also do have the, um, the town-only model as, you know, a fallback if we just feel like we can't make these, um, guidelines against these other communities work safely.
Mr. Page, a, a quick, uh, maybe it's more of a statement, um, but I'll phrase it as a question. Both options that you provided are situations where regardless of who we're playing, we will have to have masks and we will have to have other, um, safety protocols in place.
Yes, yeah. So, bo- both of these are, um, proposals where we're talking about the students being able to compete athletically at that level three that we discussed earlier in their presentation, um, which means for, for those, um, direct contact, uh, competitions, like we're talking about in soccer, field hockey, you know, to an extent volleyball, uh, the students would have to be, um, wearing masks in the, in the competitions. Uh, in a practice setting where, you know, you could create a drill where kids could be socially distancing, um, and they could be working individually, uh, you could, you could provide times where they could, um, have a break from that and still be active.
And the town-only competition model, would that not require tryouts to occur? Or I guess how do tryouts factor into this in terms of decision-making for who's on what team, especially if this is following more of a rec department model?
So, one of the things that we're pushing for both models, uh, whether it's interscholastic or town-only, um, is to not have cuts. So, even if we do, uh, play interscholastically and we do make, um, decisions about the team that would represent us for a varsity program, the hope would be that you could have, you know, practice players, um, students still connected to the program, they could still get that activity on a daily basis. Uh, we do want to create an environment where as many kids as possible can participate and, and be active and involved.
That's great.
All right, so the, I have one more slide and then.
Frank, I think Antoinette had a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Do we have an idea of how many students are interested? Like, has there been like a survey that went out or anything like that?
So, so, uh, right now, if you're looking at our, our sign-ups, I think Mr. McGee, Mr. McGee with me?
Yeah, Mr. Page, I can jump in on that. So,
Yeah.
Uh, we do have family ID registrations. Uh, currently, we have over three hundred family ID registrations, but that registration opened back in early June. So, we would need to follow up with families to find out where they're at, because some of those families may have registered in, um, in June, and they may have a different decision now. But as far as total registrations, over three hundred registrations currently. Previous fall seasons, we've been in the three hundred and thirty to three hundred and forty range of all, uh, student athlete participants.
Would students still have to pay to participate? Is there still a fee?
So, so that decision, um, might actually be made at your level, once we actually, um, go through this process and kind of come to a final resolution of what, what decision's going to be. But we did talk about potential ways we could reduce, um, reduce those fees based on what programming we push out.
And would there be, if they did play other teams, would there be busing or would we require students to meet at the school they'd be playing at?
So, uh, perfect question for a transition to the last slide here, because I, I do hit on that piece. So, if, if you look at the, the, uh, the bottom two bullets, um, first for safety reasons, in order to make this work, one of the things, uh, we would have to look at, and, and this is, I think, a discussion we'd all have to entertain, uh, we'd have to look at limiting or, uh, or eliminating building access to the school. Um, so we're not talking about traditional locker room access that you might have for a, a soccer team. Uh, but also for safety and logistical reasons, uh, we would have to look at, uh, you know, limiting or eliminating transportation, where if you're talking about that rec model, you know, uh, families do transport the kid to the event, and then they also, uh, do bring them home. So, we might have to look at those as well as added safety measures to ensure, um, you know, our, our kids are in a safe environment.
That would help with the cost too, if we're trying to lower the cost.
Yes.
Those, are those all three options, Frank?
Yeah, yep.
So, I, Frank, I could just jump into, just to reiterate the three, uh, levels, because basically that's the guidance we've received so far from MIA. Level one would be participation of any of the fall sports, um, but those would be socially distanced, meaning basically the students would have their own space. They would not get near, uh, other players, and it would be more drill-based, more physical fitness-based, and no competition. Level two offers the opportunity for cohorts of up to ten, which does allow for not masking because of the small cohort. And we actually had some discussion about, um, trying that as an inside Easton Metal Program. And, um, if we had, that would, that would allow us to not use masks. However, uh, the cohorts cannot mix at all, even if they are masked, so that kind of became not an option for us, or we, we thought it was not a feasible option. And then the level three, which is what we're looking at, both either interscholastically or, or in-house as an Easton Metal Program, would be masked most of the time at practice, uh, and for competitions. And really what we're waiting for, for that decision is the guidelines from the state individual sport organizations to come up with the rules, um, to, to actually tell us what the games are going to look like. I think the game of soccer is going to have some drastic changes and for us, or at least for me, I think the drastic changes will be, um, certainly have some weight on the decision. So, those are expected to come out on the twenty-eighth of August and then approval, uh, by the MIA and the governor potentially on September first. So, once we get those guidelines, uh, we'll look as a committee to do have further discussion on this on our meeting on September third and potentially make a decision on which direction to move forward with at that point.
Is there a way to have stronger, a stronger sense of numbers? I, I mean, I'm just thinking like if we're not, if we're not going to be potentially cutting, uh, student athletes, more students might be inclined to try, to try a sport, and then are we going to have an impact on our budget in terms of needing more coaches to potentially help with remaining socially distant? Just trying to think, like, is there a way that we can get some firmer?
I, I think, Sarah, the, the issue will be, unless we know what the program actually looks like, it's hard for families and student athletes to commit to one or the other. I think we may have some that may not want to do an, uh, only Easton Metal Program, and I think we may have some that may not want to travel to other schools. So, that would be my only, uh, question on that.
And I would just, I would chime in too, that, um, we do already have some costs, cost savings built in, um, just based on the guidelines themselves, where, uh, you're already talking about a limited number of games. You know, a lot of our, a lot of our teams play twenty games. With each game, there's a cost of officials, uh, gate workers, um, security personnel, all those, all those things. Um, football itself carries a, a, a large part of the cost for fall sports. Uh, so, so I think there, there are some savings in there, but there might be spots where we might have to find some additional help for staffing.
And there's also lots of revenue too, though, because we charge for a lot of those events, so we're not bringing those funds in either. So, just trying to think ahead, like, if we do get into a situation where families want their child participating, and we don't necessarily have the staff then, just to be cognizant that we put it out there now to the general public that there would not be cuts if we were to go forward with athletics, that we might see a spike in interest.
Well, but to that point, Sarah, I think we want to encourage that spike, and any student that wants to participate in any sport should put their, should, should jump in and, and I think we should make it happen for them, because we all acknowledge that, um, if we are able to do this, and, and again, I want to stress that we're not there yet, um, we'll still have to wait for some guidelines if we're even going to participate in sports. But if we do decide to have one sport model or the other, I want as many, uh, students or kids that are interested, um, to, to sign up. I think that's.
I agree with that. I just want to make sure we have the staff to facilitate it.
Make it happen.
I will add in that I've had a lot of staff reach out who, um, you know, not necessarily our coaches, but people in like our PE program, uh, who are more than willing to jump in and help and, and be involved in any way. And, uh, we have our, also had some discussions about different areas where we might be able to, um, get some funding, uh, pull from in order to, you know, help supplement some of these things.
The other thing I wanted to bring up too, just so I think that there was a big concern that I kind of heard out there, like, how can you go remote and then allow the sports? And there's a couple of points to that. One, sports is, is it's absolutely a family's decision whether or not they allow their, uh, child to participate. Um, and secondly, you know, we, we chose the remote because we, we have to provide an education for the students in this town. So, there's a difference, there is a little difference there. Um, and, and another thing is, the sports are important. There's a lot of children. The reason they go to school, the reason they do well is because of the sports. And that said, other extracurriculars, which I'm sure we'll hear about as we move along. But it is important to have that, something to tie the kids to the school. And, um, I hope that the MIA makes some wise decisions, so we can make a, a really informed decision moving on.
Yeah, to, to that point, um, you talked about, you know, extracurriculars and giving kids other opportunities to connect in a safe way. Uh, we've already had those, we've already started having those discussions about some of the other clubs that we might be able to run, uh, safely outside, uh, on school grounds, um, where those kids can still connect, you know. So, whether it's, um, you know, something like our music programs or, um, things like our key club, our community service program, uh, things like that, if we can still find those opportunities, we're still going to push those as long as we can meet certain guidelines.
Some of the advantages, oh, sorry.
Has the Board of Health and Amy weighed in on any of these, uh, proposals yet?
Yeah, so we met, uh, Bill with Amy this morning and, um, had a lengthy discussion, uh, and, and additional discussions in the past. Uh, so she's aware of what we're proposing. We had clarification specifically on that, um, COVID, or no, excuse me, the cohort model, uh, and she's comfortable with this. We talked about, uh, contact tracing and, uh, in terms of if we do participate with other, uh, schools, that if they go and we have to come up with some sort of, uh, benchmark in terms of if we're able to participate based on their, um, help me out here, Frank, what's it called? Infection rate?
Uh, transmission rate?
Transmission rate, yes, thank you. And so, yeah, yes, to answer your question in a long way, uh, Bill, yes, and we'll continue to work with them, because basically, uh, it will be the Board of Health and, uh, our Health Director that guide us on what we actually can do.
So, is it the plan to have them here next Thursday?
Yeah, we were going to ask, uh, at least if Amy was able to attend on the third, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And just to follow up on that, one of the key things that Amy had said was, all of the fall sports are, um, outdoor sports with the exception of girls volleyball. So, that was another reason why she was very comfortable with the outdoor sports. Uh, girls volleyball is an issue that we'll have to talk about. That's the only indoor sport. Uh, we do have the potential to set up nets outside on the, um, on the grass and paint courts and lines, but as far as competitions with other schools, volleyball would be something that we'd have to look at, since it's the only indoor competition.
Yeah, but, and to that point, Kevin and I agree, but there's definitely a huge difference between soccer, golf, and cross-country. So, I think that's, you know, that's where the confusion's going to come in too, to a certain extent.
Yeah, and, and I think that's the difference for the rules that'll be coming out for soccer. I don't see many changes to cross-country and golf in terms of the rules, but yeah, the proximity and the closeness of the participants, yeah, it is.
To that point, Greg, I don't think you'll see a change in golf and cross-country in terms of how the sport runs. It'll be how the sport starts off the event.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Like soccer and field hockey, you're going to look at modifying, you know, the play, so.
Okay.
Okay, any other, uh, questions for Mr. Page or Mr. McGee? No, okay. So, we'll look again to bring this issue back up on the third, uh, of September. We'll look for further guidance from, uh, the state before then, and, uh, we'll go from there.
Right. Alright, okay, thank you guys, I appreciate your time tonight.
Yes, thank you both for your time as well. Okay, just want to reiterate, we are working hard on on that issue, I know it's a an issue of great concern for a lot of folks and families. And we're going to do our best based on the further guidance that we get, no guarantees that it's going to happen yet, but but we're still exploring that further, so. Okay.
To that point, Mr. Thompson, I think you have, as Mr. Page said, a number of high school staff. Who would be interested in helping out in any way, because everyone sees the value of having our students stay active. Stay physically active in addition to, you know, what they might be doing in the classroom, but the the. Biggest challenge is to make sure that we're putting them in the safest possible situation.
Right. And I agree with that statement, it's all about safety right now. Okay. Excellent discussion, thank you, we're going to move forward now with the Assistant Superintendent for Business report, we have item four point two point one. The end of year financial audit report from June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. This is Blair.
Hello, everyone. Each year in the month of September, I complete what's called the end of year financial report for the prior fiscal year. This report is due on October first of each year, the report we're referring to tonight is for the fiscal year which ended June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. I'm kind of always a year behind for obvious reasons. This report includes all funding sources and expenditures for the school district. This includes the school department operating budget, all revolving accounts, grants, and also any additional town expenditures. Such as a certain percentage of the human resources department, town accountant's office and IT department. The revenues and expenditures from all the different sources are then categorized by DOE codes and reported by both the source of revenue. And the location of the expenditure. We are mandated to have an outside audit completed each year on this. End of year financial report, there were a few discrepancies found, which happens every year. I've done an amendment on this report with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which you'll see in the audit report. And each year, the school committee must vote to approve the audited end of year financial report as submitted by the outside audit. I'm so sorry, I'm not hearing you very well.
It's because I was on mute.
Oh, well, that's.
Any questions on the audit? As Pam had mentioned, there were a couple of things to to be to be fixed, but that happens every year, that we've seen that, so. It looks pretty good.
Big job, I need to do a good job every year, you really do.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the. Audit.
I move to accept the. June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, end of year audit.
Report.
Report.
Perfect. Motion has been made by Beth. Did you second Antonella, even though you're muted? Okay. Second by Antonella. I read lips, it's a talent I have. And you're in the other room, so I could hear you. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye, aye. Those opposed, nay, that motion carries five to zero. Okay, next up.
Okay, the next one is four point two point two, which is a letter from Mr. Page, principal of the high school. He has submitted a request for the school committee to accept a check for one hundred and two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Donated by Ohio Pile Prints, which is from royalties based on the sale of spiritware, so we'd like to thank those local businesses. Big Y, Stop and Shop, Walgreens and CVS for that, so when the school committee approves this, it would be deposited into the high school gift account to be used for all students.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to accept the donations.
Move to accept the gift donation from Ohio Pie Prints from royalties and deposited into a high school account in the amount of one oh two fifty.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Who's seconded, I'm sorry? Second by Beth, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye, aye. Those opposed, nay, that carries five to zero. And one more, Pam.
Okay, so the last one, four point two point three, this is a list of your, the school department's two thousand and twenty dash twenty-one grants. We have the Title One Grant, which is for Meadowbrook, Maple Shade and Berksman, pools that are supported under this grant. We paid for a reading specialist, a point-five interventionist and six paraprofessionals. We have the Title Two A Grant, which is a high-quality professional development to be used at each school. We have the Title Four Grant, which is Student Support and Academic Enrichment Grant. We have the Special Ed I T E A Grant, and this is used primarily to pay for special ed out-of-district placements. We have a new grant called ESER, stands for Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund, this is part of the CARES Act. And this will be for mentors and provide additional supports for reopening the schools. The next new grant that we have is called CVRF, which stands for Coronavirus Relief Fund. Again, this is under the CARES Act and this grant is focused on providing schools and districts with funding needed in providing educational services. And developing plans for the return to normal operations. The last two grants are state grants, and that's a MECO grant, which supports the MECO program with staffing supplies and the transportation costs. And the Comprehensive School Health Services Grant, which Kelly oversees, our nurse leader of the district. And this supports the school health services throughout the district. The grand total of those is two million, four twenty-three, zero, four, one. So as you can imagine, this is a significant amount of revenue, which will help the district. So I just need the school committee to vote to approve these FY twenty-one grants as listed on this sheet that I've given for you.
Okay, questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion to accept the grants as listed.
I move to accept the twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one grants as listed. As listed.
Perfect, yep. Motion's been made by Beth.
Second.
Second by Bill, discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye, aye. Those opposed, nay, that carries five to zero as well. Okay. With that, we have reached the end of our meeting, and I would just remind everyone, we have our next meeting September third. And also look for probably another informational video from the superintendent and myself in the near future. On the reopening plans, okay? Excellent, just want to commend the staff and I know this is a different year and there's a lot of work in progress already. Getting ready for the students to return here in a few short weeks. And also wanted to just recognize the families of Easton Metal and their understanding of this unique nature of the of this year and their understanding as we move forward. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Bill. Second by Antonella. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, please say aye, aye. Those opposed, nay, that carries five to zero, and that'll end our meeting, thank you and good night.